Good evening. We do have all six members present. Dr. Hairston is on the phone, therefore we have a quorum. Board members, we have all had an opportunity to review the agenda. Board members, I do want to call attention to one item on the agenda. I just want to make sure I had the... Hold. Is that a current one? Thank you. Under Consent Agenda Items General B, that was an item that has been added since the prep materials were sent out. And what it is, is there's a request to move the convocation from Jackson State University to the Mississippi Coliseum. And the reason for that change is that there is significant budget savings by doing that. So if we want to pull that to discuss more about...
It's O.
It's O?
Info Action Item O.
I'm looking at the wrong Coliseum agreement. Okay, thank you. My apologies. I had the wrong information. It's Information Action Item O. So we'll get the explanation of it before there's a vote. And they'll be in opportunity to ask questions. But again, since this was a venue rental, I gave the green light for it to be added. So that is... So again, that was posted. It's not amended, but I didn't want to alert board members to it. It's been a change since the prep materials went out. So with that background, is there a motion to approve the agenda?
I shall move. Second.
Ms. Hilliard has moved. Mrs. Thompson is second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
The motion carries. Next, we have all had an opportunity to review the minutes. Is there a motion to approve the June 18, 2024 regular board meeting minutes and the June 24, 2024 special board meeting minutes?
I shall move.
Second.
Ms. Hilliard has moved. Ms. McGuffey is second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. The motion carries. Dr. Green?
Thank you, Dr. Sebag. Good evening, board members. Good evening to the JPS team and community and all those who are joining us here and those who will watch live stream. We'll begin with a video highlights reel from our ITV team.
Proud parents, family, and friends gathered at the Forest Hill High School Coliseum to celebrate JPS scholars graduating summer school.
Today I challenge you to start your own success. Invest in yourself, expand your skills, choose opportunities that position you right in the workforce.
Inspirational words from a number of speakers who encouraged these determined scholars to continue their academic journeys.
Dream big and never underestimate the power you have to shape your future.
Freedom Schools program are participating in the National Day of Social Action project to denounce book banning and campaigns to limit book access at the city, state, and national level.
JPS Freedom School scholars gathered at the two Mississippi museums for National Day of Social Action with a passionate message about book banning.
Thirty percent of all book bans and challenges are against books featuring characters of color.
For this event, it's very much a social, emotional learning, JPS joy event.
The Hardy Hughes Athletic Complex is where hundreds of JPS scholars and parents gathered for the 2024 JPS Summer Olympics.
It's about building relationships, and more than anything else, it's about them personally feeling fulfilled.
The JPS Summertime Olympics was a shining example of JPS joy, emphasizing the importance of creating great readers and great players.
We are JPS!
You're invited to the JPS Job Fair Thursday, July 18 from 4:30 till 6:30 PM at Forest Hill High School. Teaching, campus enforcement, child nutrition, transportation, and maintenance. Applicants bring a copy of your resume and teacher applicants bring a copy of your teaching certificate. Call 601-985-3159 or visit the JPS website. As we reflect on the 2023-24 school year, Jackson Public Schools pays tribute to the cherished members of our community, both employees and students who are no longer with us. Their contributions and presence enriched our lives and left a lasting impact on our school district. Each name displayed on the screen represents a beloved individual who will be deeply missed. We extend our heartfelt condolences to their families, coworkers, and fellow students. Our thoughts and prayers are with you as we honor and remember these remarkable individuals.
As always, we want to thank our team members for the thoughtful presentation of the news and latest events around our district. As you know, board members, we've launched our new five-year strategic plan, The Power of People and Possibilities. We launched it last month, and as we prepare for the start of the new school year, we will host a community conversation and likely multiple community conversations. But we'll host one on the 30th of this month, a conversation to talk more in depth about the plan and about each of our individual opportunities to help the plan come to life. So during this meeting, we'll explore ways in which our scholars and parents and community members and partners might support our priorities and help us to reach our shared goals for scholars and their families. The Power of People and Possibilities, our plan, new strategic plan emphasizes the role of all JPS community members. And so we're hopeful that this conversation and others to come will help us all to identify those points of convergence and shared responsibility and mutual benefit. I've said time and time again, even with the prior plan, that this isn't Eric Green's plan or just the leadership team's plan, but our strategic plan and one that we're hopeful that through some really intentional efforts that we do have broad buy-in and that we each see ourselves as active members of the team to help bring the plan to life and, of course, the outcomes that we're working towards. So please, board members and to our JPS community members, we're inviting everyone to join us on Tuesday, July 30 at 5:30. And this will be held at the two museums, two Mississippi museums. It's for, again, a conversation about what we together can do to ensure that our strategic plan comes to life and that we have a successful school district and that our city continues to thrive. So again, that's Tuesday, July 30 at 5:30. Looking forward to having that continued discussion. During our last board meeting, the administration proposed the FY 2025 budget that contemplated increased compensation for both our classified and certified team members. And I'm pleased that our Chief of Operations and Finance, Mr. Earl Burke, will present a more detailed plan tonight. Mr. Burke and his team worked countless hours and weekends to develop a plan that would make a difference for our team members in terms of their compensation, but one that would also, that we could also financially support in our budget. And so I'm confident that the JPS community will join me, join us in celebrating our team members and helping us to acknowledge them in this really important way through compensation. And so, board members, you'll hear more about that as we move through the agenda. And lastly, it's always an awesome and amazing opportunity for us to have community members join us in our work to transform the district. And at this time, I'm going to invite Jeanette Wissington, who's our Rise Library Media Specialist, to join us and to introduce the members of Soul City Cycling and to tell us more about their organization and why they happen to be here tonight. Mrs. Wissington, good to see you.
Nice to see you as well, to President Sebag, our board members, Superintendent Green again, and our JPS family. The Soul City Cycling Club was established in 18 in August 2021 with the mission of promoting good health through cycling while fostering diversity, unity, and mutual support among cyclists within our communities. The Soul City Cycling Club, or Major Taylor Cycling Club, honors Marshall "Major" Taylor, who on August 10, 1899, won the World One Mile Championship in Montreal to become the second black world champion athlete, following boxer George Dixon. The Soul City Major Taylor Cycling Club is here to present 16 copies of the book, Major Taylor: World Cycling Champion, to our JPS libraries. This book comes highly recommended by me for two reasons. One, it is a Coretta Scott King Award winner, and two, it allowed me the opportunity to read about an African-American cyclist in which I identified with Major Taylor's struggles and challenges. Mr. Eric Williams, President of the Soul City Cycling Club, will come and make the presentation.
Could the Soul City Cycling Board come up as well? So we have our board here to participate in this presentation for the children's book, Major Taylor: World Cycling Champion. And as previously mentioned, Major Taylor was an athlete during his time that was not well-known. Actually, when he passed away, he was buried in a barber's grave and didn't have a tombstone or anything like that, so he kind of disappeared from the history. Later on, a group of cyclists actually had him removed from their grave and moved back to his hometown in Chicago, and that's where he rests now. We actually, our club went to Chicago this year for a Major Taylor Cycling Convention as we are also part of a international cycling club, which is called MTICA. It's the Major Taylor International Cycling Alliance. So at that convention in Chicago, there was over 500 cyclists, mostly African-American, from around the US. We had three days of riding and conventions on safe cycling, how to set up clubs and things of that nature. So it was a really enjoyable time for us. So I'll just introduce my board real quick and then we'll do the presentation. So starting from the right, we have Dr. David Josie, Director-at-Large. We have Terrya Floyd Patterson, Director-at-Large. Cedric Chaffee, Director of Memberships. Denise Chaffee, Director-at-Large. Kendra Patterson, Vice President. And Leslie Dunbar, Treasurer and Secretary. So with these strong individuals, we go out each week, lead rides for the public, train riders on how to ride safely. We also host clinics on bike maintenance, bike nutrition, and things of that nature. Again, thank you for this opportunity to present this book to the children's at the Jackson Public Schools. Thank you.
If you don't mind, would you share just a little bit more about the club and perhaps how folks might join if they might be interested and that sort of thing?
Yes, yes, yes. I should do that. I'm a little nervous, so. Yeah, so we do have a website. It should be easy to remember. It's ridewithsoul.org. So ridewithsoul.org. And you can go there, you can see the history of our club, you can see the history of Major Taylor, the events that we have around the year, and how to join. Also, we're on Facebook, Soul City Cycling Mississippi. That's where we share a lot of our events. A lot of our members are there that share their events and their stories at that time. And currently, we have about 120 members, official members of our club. We started with 40 in August of 2021, and now we're at 120.
And did you say that Major Taylor lived here?
No, sir. He was from Indianapolis, and he moved to Horshear, Massachusetts when he began to race. And actually, in 1899, he won the World Speed Championship in Montreal, as she said. And then in 1900, he won the One Mile Championship. And, oh, you need to read the book. I'm sorry. Yes, you need to read it. And I guess, I guess just to tease the book, the book is specifically about an event that he participated in at the age of 18. It's called the Six-Day Race. So the objective of the race was to ride six days straight as far as you could. And at some points in the ride, he actually was riding while he was asleep. Okay? And at the end of the ride, he ended up with a bunch of miles, so you gotta... Let's just say it may take you a couple months to drive as far as he rode that bike, so. All right. Thank you.
All right, great. Thank you.
I want to look this way. And one, two, three. Go right there. Two, one, turn. One, two, three. One more. One, two, three. Thank you.
Hey, nigga, y'all cyclists. So I think our board president wanted to say a few words.
Yes. Before y'all go, Mr. Arrie, we met on Friday, because I rode with y'all on Friday. And then I came out and rode with y'all on Saturday. I did, the Summer Sizzler. So not that you need me to validate what you're doing, but what I do want to say is because I know we also have our athletic director here. This is the most organized cycling group, and it's not the only one in the whole metro area. And there were riders who were from, at the Summer Sizzler event, there were hundreds of riders from San Antonio and Nashville and Miami. You didn't brag. You didn't even talk about the ride, but Miami, people, there was a Murri graduate from the class of '76 who was riding, he came back from Miami just for the ride. And so, you know, we need to figure out how to get our students connected with this club because you saw, you know, it's more than just the book. It's about, I mean, because when I see y'all, it's about community. It's about, I mean, and if you're on their Facebook site, you know, it's more than just we're going, you know, we're riding 35 miles, say, or 20 miles, you know, they're celebrating birthdays and milestones. I think I saw some guy riding way earlier than I'd ever get up to ride. Okay. But again, I just, I can't, and I can't say enough, the riders who've been riding decades said it's the most organized ride in the whole, all of Mississippi, the Summer Sizzler. And so, so again, Dr. Green, let's figure out how to make this more than just a book swap.
So thank you for that encouragement, but I think, I think we're already started. I can't recall who we've been in touch with, but we, I believe there's been some conversation. And I don't have the best memory, but...
Who's him?
Okay, okay. I recently purchased a bike.
That's right. I wasn't gonna share your story.
So I guess I'm outing myself publicly that I might need to join y'all and figure out how to ride a little farther than my neighborhood. But in doing so, the folks who sold me the bike helped me to get to become familiar with Soul City Cycling. And so I'm excited that we're in your sights. Y'all are certainly in our sights, and yeah, this looks like tons of opportunities, not the least of which getting our babies to read this wonderful history. So thank you so much for this and for being here this evening. Just appreciate you.
Thank you, Dr. Green. Thank you, Ms. Eric. Same, same. I had to wait for someone to say your name, so I...
Thank you again to the entire board for being here and for this wonderful gift to our scholars and to our school district. With that, Dr. Sebag, I'll turn the meeting back over to your capable hands.
Great. Thanks again, Dr. Green, and again, congratulations to Soul City Cycling and really, really grateful for your presence here tonight. I also want to take a moment to shout out the team that organized the summer graduation. I had the opportunity to attend it. That's my first time attending it. Been on the board now almost six years. It is six years and almost seven. Anyway, that's irrelevant. The point was, the ceremony was beautiful. It was well-done. The speakers were amazing. The Forest Hill Coliseum looked like the university that they espouse it to be of South Jackson, and just a great spirit. So again, I just wanted to lift that up and thank the team for, Mrs. Marshall Thomas, you know, led that off, and her words of encouragement were inspiring as always, so thank you. All right, board members, you'll see we have board members' reports. We do have some updates. We're in a new year. We're in a new school year, fiscal year, all of the things. So just a couple of things so we can get out ahead of our board obligations.
Skip the public participation.
Thank you.
Well, I think you still need to...
Yeah, I'll still announce it. I appreciate that, Ms. Williams. I was getting too excited about the Soul City Cycling Group.
Yeah.
So we do not have any public comments tonight, but it's always a good reminder that community members who would like to make public comments should email their requests to Ms. Rosalyn Williams, our Board Secretary, at roswilliams@jackson.k12.ms.us no later than 4:00 PM on the day of the meeting or appear in person in the boardroom no later than 5:15 PM on the day of the meeting. Thank you, Ms. Williams. And I found my agenda as well, so thank you. As for board member reports, board members, there are some obligations that we have each year, so I just want to go over those things so we can get out ahead of those. So the first is our continuing education hours. We all have a requirement to get six hours in between July 1 and June 30. So there are multiple opportunities to attend these with the Mississippi School Board Association in person or virtually. We also have site visit, contact hours. So, and Ms. Williams will send a calendar invite out to all board members who want to visit schools with the superintendent. Dr. Green, I believe, still does visit every single school within the first month of school, so there are ample opportunities to go out and visit schools and get these hours in. It's a great way to start off the year, to meet our team members, our instructional leaders, and to see the students in action as well. And last but not least, we do have attendance requirements, and this is in statute. And basically, the way it reads is if a member of a school board misses 20% or more of the meetings of the school board during a calendar year, except for absence caused by military service, the board member must reimburse the district for that portion of the salary paid to that member in which the year where the absence occurred, and it's proportionate to the number of meetings missed in relation to the number of school board meetings held. Consideration is only given to meetings for which public notice is required. One other update, those are our requirements, attendance, training, contact hours. We are, so we are having some transition at our board committee leadership. Dr. Hairston has graciously asked to step down from chairing the policy committee to being a policy committee member. So before I announce the new chair of the committee, I do want to thank Dr. Hairston for serving on that committee, for serving on it and chairing it for so many years, I believe since she's been seated. So we'll just... And moving us to the process we have now where, you know, we're going through it. It's a busy committee. It's a working committee. So with Dr. Hairston's transition, I've asked Mrs. Cynthia Thompson to assume the role of Chair of the Committee, which she has graciously accepted. So let's give her a round of applause. And so that is the only one. I'm going to remain as Chair of the Budget Committee. We're gonna, I've got to, we've got to work with you on committee assignments, so we have quorums. But I can assure you, everyone will have their first choice, so we've just got to figure out how we get quorums when needed. So as that comes to fruition, I'll let you know. So that concludes the board member report. So now we will move on to other information items, and we have our SR3 monthly update. Mr. Devin Boone, tell me your name again.
I'm Devin.
You are Devin. Okay, we got it right. Okay. Thank you. We'll present this information. And Mr. Boone, I will try to burn this into my mind because you're a regular.
No problem. Good evening, everyone. It's great to see you all again, and we're just gonna go right to it. Our update is from May 16 through June 15, and we are elated about a lot of the progress we have going on. So there we go, right now, okay? So of course, we're gonna address updates, scheduling, and budget. So Pecan Park, we'll spend a little bit of time talking about Pecan Park. Really excited. I know you might see 47.4% complete, but our project manager was there today, and he was just going on about how this school is basically ready to go. The contractor's been working non-stop, morning, noon, night, weekends, to honor their contractual obligation. So all I might say, July 15, they're very, very close. And the last step, I think some flooring has been done before they bring in the furniture. They're handing over the building piece by piece to the district so they can make seamless transition so that students and staff can return to the school. So really excited about the progress here. There's ongoing exterior progress, the glass has been added, the metal frame. So when I say that the contracts are dedicated, they're dedicated. They understand the push to get this job done for the district, and we're really excited about the progress there. Our next project we're gonna discuss is Bailey. Again, you see 59.5%. This project is rolling along really, really well. You see, we have that change order that's coming in place, and those contractors are working really hard on that. You see the money being well-spent with some of the new plumbing in the boys restroom, as well as the multi-purpose room and the ceiling installation. So things is going as well as possible with this project as we just continue to push for that October 1 date pictured there. Our next project, Jim Hill, really excited about the progress here as well. You see July 5, and talked to our project manager about this project. It is ready to go. The roof, you see roof units, the area's working at Jim Hill. The roof has been replaced. You see the kitchen equipment relocated. So again, we get excited about projects that end on time and end well. So excited about the progress there at Jim Hill. Our next project, CDC, we see there only 24.8% complete, but that was as of June 15. I was on the phone with the contractor earlier today, probably his meeting. They're roughly around 80% complete. We recommended some additional time. He said himself he might need about another month, a month and a half, but they're working hard to get this project ready to hand off to office part. They need some ceiling tiles, and one of the delays on the project was they have a really ornate staircase there in the school, so way on the glass and some of the handrails will be installed. But other than that, again, these contracts are working really, really hard to make sure these projects get done on time. So when you see this update next time, you'll see a lot more completion percentage on that one. Again, the CDC, there's a restroom upgrades. You see here, they're 2%. It just shows, you'll see this throughout the slide presentation, it shows mobilization of contracts to getting things started. So at the time, they were just getting moving on this project, but they're gonna try, try to meet that December 15 deadline. Capital City, this is a great project here. I love seeing this come across our system. 20% there, but it's going really, really well. Those restrooms have been demolished, and they have already been, they're practically done based on most recent report. So we're gonna be well ahead of that November 13 deadline pending any type of delays on any of the HVAC equipment. So this is a project going really, really well. Mission to HVAC, Package A, we love this one. We saw 43.8% complete, but based on progress, this job is practically wrapped up, just gotta get some final things knocked out. And Bates, Blackburn, Codosa, Forest Hill, and Peoples, you have new units throughout the entire district, and they're up and running. So really excited about... Mission HVAC, Package A, we love this one. We saw 43.8% complete, but based on progress, this job is practically wrapped up. Just gotta get some final things knocked out. At Bates, Blackburn, Cardozo, Forest Hill, and Peoples, you have new units throughout the entire district and they're up and running. So, really excited about the HVAC we can provide for students. Same thing in Package B. This project might show a November 28 deadline, but they're well, well ahead of schedule. At Callaway, Kirksey, North Jackson, McWillie, they may have some new flooring brought in there. These projects is going as well as one could imagine, and we're really, really excited about that. Package E, more HVAC work. It is on track to be complete by October 25. We're showing here 28.1% complete. And right here, these projects are gonna... We're just checking the units, make sure they're working in operation and keep them up so you don't spend more money on them over time. So, maintenance is a big part of that. Package F, another really good project. Lot of progress going on Northwest Jackson Elementary School, the new restrooms. 37.4% complete. This project is going extremely well. We love good progress on these projects, and this is another. Board and Green, you might only see 2% on this project right here, but this project is practically done. This was additional work. The contractor did so well, and the building looks so nice that we had to do it twice. So, we had additional windows right here. This is at Boyd and at Green. Again, this project is practically wrapped up. Just gotta get the paperwork to confirm that substantial completion. Mura, 13.6% complete here. We're striving for that September 6 date. You see in the PE room, classroom demolition. Working really hard to get this project going. Skylight replays, and the contractors are really working to meet that September 6 date. Similar progress here. Provine, these two schools, all the rows are very similar construction. We're showing here the skylight replacement and more PE classroom demolition. So, that project is on track as well. Here we see work at Isabel. Again, mobilization taking place at 2%. And last but not least, Power, S.R. Innovation, we face two. A lot of upgrades coming to the school with exterior drainage, window replacement, and the kitchen floor replacement. And that project is rolling. It should be wrapped up by December 27. So, substantial completed projects. Wells APEC, Boyd Elementary, Wynn, and John Hopkins. As well, we're gonna have Boyd and Green, those window replacements. MacLeod and Powell, those first renovations at Powell Middle School. Contracts under legal review at that time, but this is already ready to go at Templeona. And a project that's gonna be a process at the time was the ELC Outdoor Learning Pavilion. So, that concludes our update. Thank you for your time. Any questions, we happen to answer those.
Thank you, Mr. Boone. Any questions, comments, board members? I hear none. I look forward to being in those buildings during these visits that are forthcoming. Thank you for the continued work.
Yes, sir.
You know, I always ask my monthly question, are we on track to spend the money?
I'm waiting on it.
We're on track.
All right.
All right.
We're on track. Dr. Merritt, put it in the minutes. All right, thank you.
Thank you, thank you.
All right. All right, next, board members. Oh, look, it's Dr. Merritt is on the agenda to run through the photography vendor list.
I can recite it from heart because I know it. The administration has recommended approval of the photography vendor list for the 24-25 school year.
Thank you, Dr. Merritt. Board members, are there any questions about the... What's that?
And the form contract.
And the form contract.
And the form contract. Yes, ma'am. Thank you.
Any questions about the photography vendor list or the form contract? All right, thank you, Dr. Merritt. Next, we have the review of the agreement between the Bean Path and the Jackson Public School District. Mr. David Shoma, our grant manager, will present this information.
All right, good evening, Dr. Green, President Sevak, and members of the board. The administration recommends reviewing the agreement between Bean Path and Jackson Public Schools. This MOU aims to establish girls robotics clubs at Cardozo and Peoples Middle Schools. Now more than ever, it's vitally important that girls are immersed in STEM learning activities and opportunities. STEM, which stands for science, technology, engineering, and mathematics, helps students develop problem-solving and critical thinking skills to fuel future innovation, exploration, culture, and survival. A component of the JPS Innovative Approaches to Literacy RISE grant is to provide technology-based learning tools and extended learning opportunities for students. An approved JPS vendor, Bean Path, which is a 501(c)(3) nonprofit organization and based in Jackson. Bean Path provides access to tools, knowledge, and networks to strengthen Mississippi's tech community. To establish girls robotics clubs at the JPS middle school level, Bean Path will provide professional development services and information resources at Cardozo and Peoples Middle Schools. Edgeshift is the designated externally evaluated for the program. Surveys will be used to determine the overall impact of the girls robotics program. Funding for this project is made possible through the Innovative Approaches to Literacy Grant. And of course, this supports commitment number two, innovative teaching and learning, as well as commitment four, joyful learning environments.
Thank you, Mr. Shoma. Board members, are there any questions, comments?
No question, just a comment real quick. My... One of my daughters this past year was part of a robotics team for the first time. And I mean, it's nothing that existed when I was young, right? But it was an incredible experience. So, I just, I want to applaud you and the grant team in sort of building that up. I saw the shift in impact that it made in... Hers wasn't an all-girls team, but it was mostly girls. So, and just the shift that it made for them and the impact that it made for them. I'm really excited to see an expansion of that, those offerings for the girls in JPS. So, great.
Thank you, Mr. McGuff. Thank you, Mr. Shoma. All right, next, we have a review of the various policies for amendment and creation around our gifted education program and our distance online and virtual learning and retired teacher employment. Mr. Matthew Draper, our staff attorney, will bring this information before us.
Good evening, Board President, Dr. Sevak, board members, and Superintendent, Dr. Green, and community members. The Office of the General Counsel is recommending the Board of Trustees review the recommendations related to the amendments of policies IDAA, which is the Gifted Education Program, IAAA, which is Distance Online and Virtual Learning, and the creation of policy GBDB, which is our new Retired Teacher Employment Policy. The proposed changes to these policies were posted on the district's webpage under Policies Under Review on July 10, 2024, for public review and comments. And if anybody has any questions, I can take them.
Thank you, Mr. Draper. Board members, any questions, comments? I did have a question associated with the I AAA, Distance Online and Virtual Learning. And it's specifically in reference to the amount of synchronous learning time that students may have. Will students who are involved in our virtual learning option be required to receive 330 minutes of synchronous learning?
Okay, so the instructional day is designed to be 330 minutes, but it includes both synchronous and asynchronous learning.
Okay, and this may be a question more for Dr. Green. Is that... So, obviously, or... Okay, Mrs. Marshall Thomas, thank you. So, Mrs. Marshall Thomas, is that consistent with how... I guess I'm trying to... The question is around how much instructional time the students get relative to students who are in a classroom setting? Is it roughly the same?
So, for this model, Dr. Sevak, it is a regular 94-minute block. Teachers are providing a combination of synchronous instruction. So, today, it may be 75 minutes of direct teaching that, you know, where we're going through the instructional model. And then it may be 15 minutes of independent practice based on what was taught. So, it will look very, very similar to how an in-person classroom looks. Our teachers provide instruction, and then our students also have some time for independent practice. And so, that's the model that we will run. It's virtual, but it will look just like our in-person classes.
Great. Thank you for that update. Any other questions? All right, thank you, Mr. Draper. All right, next, we'll invite Dr. Smith up to go through items F and G. The first is the review of the renewal agreement between the Mississippi Symphony Orchestra and Jackson Public Schools. And the second will be the review of the renewal agreement between Parents for Public Schools Jackson and the Jackson Public School District. Dr. Smith.
Good evening to President Sevak, our board members, Dr. Green. Bringing before you tonight the... For information regarding the MOU between our Mississippi Symphony Orchestra and the Strings Program and JPS. And just a point of clarity, we want to make sure too that the board is aware that we do all of our concerts in person. One is at Dalmar and one is at one of our high schools, which is at Callaway. But this program provides strings to both our elementary schools as well as our middle schools and to continue to provide those services.
Great, thank you, Dr. Smith. Board members, any questions on the Strings contract? I think, Dr. Smith, you answered my one question. I had seen the provision for a virtual performance, but it sounds like the students will have an opportunity to hear a concert at Dal Yamar.
Yes, they do. They... That's just in place just in case there is a crisis or, you know, a very extreme circumstance where we are not in school or it's preventing them from being there in person. But since we reopened in 2021, if I'm not mistaken, we've had a in-person concerts, kinder concerts, our middle schools, at our high school, and at Dalmar.
Great.
Yes, yes, sir.
Thank you for that, I think.
You're welcome. And the next one is our renewal agreement with the Parents of Public Schools with our Ask for More Arts programs at Bates Elementary, Callaway, Green, Johnson, John Hopkins, MacLeod, Obama, and Walton to continue to provide arts in those schools as an extra program for those particularly elementary schools.
Great, thank you, Dr. Smith. Board members, any questions or comments? Okay, thank you for all your work on these. Board members, next we will move on to our information action items. And we have a number of items, A through...
Dr. Sevak.
Yes, yes, Dr. Hairston.
Excuse me, I'm a bit slow, but I was excited to see the remarks, all the remarks, but especially the Bean Path. Because if I'm not mistaken, the Bean Path was founded by a JPS graduate, Dr. Ashley Sheepes, I believe.
Yes.
I think that's... If the gentleman in the room confirmed that, it's a good fact that I just wanted to share that.
Yes, definitely. That she is the founder, our JPS grad. And I'm spacing on her school. Was it Mura? I didn't want to say Mura and it'd be Callaway.
Great, thank you so much. Excuse me for interrupting.
Thank you, Dr. Hairston. Really appreciate you drawing that connection. It's always great to be... See the continued growth of our students in partnership. Oh, Dr. Smith has the next one. I was... Okay, great. So, board members, as I was saying, we have a lot of information action items, A through Q. So, I'm gonna recommend we take these up as a slate. I think they're pretty straightforward. So, we'll just invite our various team members up. And I think it's structured in a way so where folks will roll through. So, Dr. Smith has the first one, and this is the request to approve the partial fulfillment of RFP 2024-17 for high-quality instructional materials for core curriculum resources, also known as Accelerate Learning. Dr. Smith.
All right, so this one is a heavy lift. So, in our partial fulfillment, our RFP 24-17, we are requesting approval of MOU with Accelerate Learning to purchase STEM scopes. And with STEM scopes, we will be able to provide science instruction grades kindergarten through biology. And there, these scope of services will enable us to provide online and print support, demonstration labs, as well as other opportunities related to science that is directly aligned to our Mississippi College Career Ready Standards for Science.
Great, thank you, Dr. Smith. And can you provide a little bit more background on what students will receive for this? I believe it's directed at fifth and eighth grade scholars. Is that correct?
So, this year, we have an opportunity of even looking at it, being able to implement it kindergarten all the way up through high school. Last year, we had it fifth grade, eighth grade, and biology because those were our tested areas. And so, one exciting feature is that with our professional learning, we have so many sessions because each teacher that teaches science will get one-on-one coaching from STEM scopes. And so, that they will be better able to implement that. And we are excited about being able to do this kindergarten through fourth grade because it will help to build their background knowledge, build vocabulary, and all of those things that we need prior to them getting to fifth grade and being more succinct with our science standards as it relates to Mississippi. A lot of our resources are aligned to the national standards for science, but not to the Mississippi standards for science. So, this resource is aligned directly to the Mississippi State standards.
Thanks for that additional information. I think it's really helpful to hear the forward-looking preparation we're doing before we get to the test. That's great.
And the online version opens up the labs and everything for all of our students, K through 4, fifth grade, sixth, seventh grade, eighth grade, and biology.
Great, and it's open and available to all of our scholars in all of our schools?
Yes, sir.
Great, okay. Next, we'll invite Mr. Kenneth Green to the podium. He will be working us through the request to approve the agreement between American Medical Response and Jackson Public School District.
Good evening, Dr. Green, Board President, Dr. Sevak, and our board members. The Athletic Department recommends that AMR be approved for standby ambulatory service during high, middle, and junior varsity football games and other Jackson Public School District activities, including convocation and graduation. Board members, are there any questions?
Thank you, Coach Green. Board members, any additional questions? Let me just say congratulations on your new position.
Thank you so much.
And I appreciate you bringing this before us this evening.
Yeah, I want to just publicly acknowledge and just thank y'all for giving me the opportunity to serve our students and parents in JPS. Thank you.
All right, all right.
Come on, Coach Green.
All right, board members. Next, we will move on to item C. Invite Mrs. Marshall Thomas, our Assistant Superintendent to the High School Division, to the podium. The first is to approve the renewal agreement between Heinz County Board of Supervisors and Henley Young Juvenile Attention Center. Mrs. Marshall Thomas.
Good evening, again, Dr. Sevak, board members, Dr. Green, JPS family and friends. The administration recommends approval of the memorandum of agreement between the Jackson Public School District and the Heinz County Board of Supervisors for the Henley Young Patent Juvenile Justice Center. In accordance with Mississippi Code 1972, educational provisions are required for all compulsory school-aged students detained in a youth detention center facility. And so, the district will provide educational services to include the required 330 instructional minutes, as determined by the Mississippi Department of Education, for students for fiscal year 2024-25 to all of our eligible and qualified children and youth housed at the detention center. There was a question that was posed, and the question was how many days of instruction were missed during the last contract year due to the inability of the juvenile detention center to provide the youth care professionals? And I did respond that we did not miss any instructional days. We actually provided instructional days each day, and we provided the number of instructional minutes. What we had were certain students in certain pods. Most of those were our JCAs that were not able to come up for disciplinary reasons. And JCA stands for Juvenile Charged as Adults. Our non-JCA scholars, those students came up every day for instruction. It was just those students that may have had some disciplinary issues that were not allowed to attend school. And in those instances, we were able to provide asynchronous activities and assignments. And those assignments will be collected, they will be graded, and feedback will be given back to the students. And when those students were able to come up, the teachers tried to fill in gaps based on feedback they saw in those assignments.
Great, thank you for that additional information. I believe in the past, there were some instances where we didn't get that level of attention, but it sounds like that's been rectified.
And they've been able to work with the Heinz County Sheriff's Department to provide the number of youth care professionals that we need. So, we've seen a drastic change in the number of supports in the classrooms this particular school year.
Very good.
That's great.
The non-JPS scholars, where... They're from another district? The non-JPS scholars, where, they're from another district?
We do have some, we, we, we do, um, we, we have other districts that we also provide, um, educational services to Heinz County and Madison County.
Okay. Thank you.
Any additional questions, board members? Hearing none. Thank you, Mrs. Marshall Thomas. We will move on to the request to approve the renewal agreement between Heinz Community College and Jackson Public School District for a dual credit and dual enrollment program.
Yes, sir. The administration recommends the approval of the Memorandum of Understanding with Heinz Community College and Jackson Public Schools to offer dual credit and dual enrollment courses during the 2024-25 school year. Um, of course, Mississippi Code 1972, 37, 15, 38, established a dual enrollment and dual credit program for high schools and post, earning post-secondary credit. And so the purpose of the program is to offer opportunities for qualified students to take, um, college courses while still enrolled in high schools. And so all six of our high schools next year will continue to offer the dual credit courses, um, that are listed in the, in the agreement. And, um, the question that was asked was how many students are actually enrolled last school year? We had a total of 506 scholars enrolled with 1,828 courses taken, um, over the school year. Um, we also provide, um, dual credit courses at our CTE Center at CDC. And, um, the only program that we, um, provide those courses in our, in, um, early childhood education. Uh, what is the goal? The goal is that every scholar in our district take at least one dual credit course. And, um, the question was asked, so how are we working toward, um, goal attainment? And so I shared that our new strategic plan, A Strong Finish, is the epitome of exactly where you're asking. How do we ensure that our scholars are, are exposed in receiving these types of opportunities, whether they are dual credit courses or any type of rigorous coursework, um, including AP and IB courses? And so a couple of things that, that we have in place, um, includes ensuring that students are prepared by having the required GPA. And I shared in the, in the response that, that Mississippi Department of Education have a, a, academic requirements. And one of the academic requirements is that they have a 3.0 GPA to even take those courses. And this is for our public, um, colleges and universities. And so now, starting in ninth grade, we have a really strong focus and strategies around, um, GPA with ninth graders. Oftentimes, that's not been the case. We really only start focusing on, on GPAs starting in 11th grade and 12th grades. But by that time, it's, it's, it's a little too late. So with our incoming ninth graders, and we have our transition program starting next week, every high school has a focus on GPAs as part of their transition program. And we actually have some strategies in place where they'll be able to calculate, learn what they are on their own. You know, you don't have to wait until you get your transcript to see it. You can calculate it, and this is how it's done. And, um, improving quality tier-one instruction so that our students can actually get and attain the, the, um, the grades that they need to maintain, um, um, the adequate GPA. In addition to that, we do have ACT, um, requirements for certain courses. Um, and so what we have are really, um, strong strategies around improving our ACT. And that's one that I know that you all, we've approved in the past, and that's even providing access to, to the ACT during the regular school day. And so you all know, last year we started with administering ACT in ninth grade right during the regular school day. And that has been really, really impactful. The more exposure they have to taking the ACT, the better they'll get. And so we, we're, we'll be expecting to see, you know, better outcomes when it comes to just access to taking those dual credit courses.
Great. Thank you, Mrs. Marshall Thomas, for that additional information. I know there's a lot, part of the reason that those, I raised those questions is I have gotten some questions from lawmakers around our, our dual credit programs, and I'll probably connect some of those, direct those your way, Dr. Green. Um, and so this was really helpful, um, and specifically from the Jackson delegation.
And, and is it more about our taking advantage of or performance in, or all the above?
I think it, it was, it was shared in the context of, it seems like there's lots of opportunities from both the college perspective and from JPS perspective, I think, to, to do more from both sides.
Yeah. I appreciate you connecting me with, with any of those so we can follow up with additional information. I will say, um, you know, one of the things that we've got to balance, no, now, one, there, as, this is Marshall Thomas, Dr. Soon-to-be, soon, Marshall Thomas, um, stated, uh, there are requirements for the scholars to take those courses. But I want to lift up, you know, we, we're, we want to balance the exposure piece to the, um, you know, districts get points on the accountability system, not air quotes. They get points on the accountability system for the scholars who take these dual credit courses. And I don't want us to be in the business of just running kids through these courses in order to get the points for the district when we know that there's more work to be done for the scholars themselves to be ready to take the courses and pass the courses, right? So there's a, there's, I don't want to speak to anyone else's intentions. Here in Jackson Public Schools, we want to better prepare our scholars for all the courses that they take, including these dual credit courses. So I'll end with that.
One thing I would, I would piggyback on that, um, that I, that I saw, you know, I've seen for years, i- is that sometimes students who are in high school don't have an appreciation for what their GPA, they think about their GPA in high school, but they don't think about their GPA in college. And if you enroll in dual credit courses, they count. And so, uh, to your point about making sure they're prepared to take the classes because it can have a trickle-down effect, um, if they're not.
And I appreciate that so, so very much. And I even appreciate, um, what, uh, uh, Dr. Thomas.
Speaking to his existence.
It, it sounds good, doesn't it? But presented basically to say, we have to prepare our scholars starting out. And, and even the knowledge of knowing how to calculate their own GPAs and calculate their own credits as they go, that is powerful. Um, and then they are empowered to kind of know what that looks like as they go. And they can begin to make those choices for what it is they want to do. Because when we're talking about what their career choices are or where they want to go, they're able to start looking at that as, as early as entering into the doors of high school. They know there's a purpose. There's an end game. It's not just, I'm going to school. And so if you know where you're trying to go, these are the bullet points to get you there, then you, you, you already know what you can choose to get to where you're trying to go, as well as scholarship dollars, just to tell them upfront what, what, what that looks like so they can begin to compete and be ready to do it on the front end and not on the back end. So I so appreciate that. And I even appreciate it to the point where even as going in, in the eighth grade, before you go into high school, to be ready, like almost like a cheer squad, ready. So when I go in the doors, I'm ready, I know, I'm, I'm ready to go sign up for what I need to do and how I'm gonna get there. So I appreciate it. Thank you all for all this hard work. I mean, I, I just, my little time here on the board and seeing this involvement, um, it's beautiful. It, it sounds good, it feels good, and I'm excited for this new school year.
I, I just want to piggyback on one thing you said because, because it came to mind when she was talking about the training that they're doing for the ninth grade. Um, I think that's phenomenal. I think it's, uh, badly needed. We, a- and I think it's, it's expanding the toolbox for these kids. We talked a lot, you know, coming out of commencements about how do you calculate for, uh, valedictorian, salutatorian qualifications and things like that? They need to know how to do that. But, um, if you, you, you remember the, you remember Name That Tune, right? It's like, you know, you're always one upping one another. I mean, eighth grade, seventh grade, because seventh grade kids have to sign up for eighth grade classes. Some of those eighth grade classes put you in line to take classes that you can't take if you haven't already taken algebra or whatever. Getting, I, I think we should be doing that. I think we should be talking to them in, in eighth grade about, uh, some of the opportunities that are going to be presented to them. I think we should be talking to seventh graders about what the requirements are. If you think you're X, Y, or Z, and we think you're all amazing, here's how you're going to get there. Um, and so I just want to, I, I, I absolutely echo what she said and, uh, applaud all the work that's being done. I just want to keep seeing us disseminate as much information as possible, give these kids the shots, uh, give them all a chance, right, at, at hitting as high as they can hit. So, um, that's just my one push.
And I do want to add that, um, all of our students, even starting in sixth grade, have the individual success plans. And so inside of those ISP's, that's exactly where that conversation starts. Based on, um, you know, career interest inventories, these are courses that will set you on the trajectory to meet the, that particular career path. And students actually map out, starting as early as seventh grade, what they'll take in seventh grade, what they'll take in eighth grade, ninth. And so during those academic counseling sessions with the counselors, that's exactly the conversations that are going on, um, even starting as early as seventh grade.
I love it. I, and, and...
Are these, yes, sir.
Go ahead.
Are these, uh, sessions available for all of the teachers where they can be a support system for what it is that you're trying to achieve? You know, they're able to, do they know, I guess is what I'm asking?
Good question.
Uh, where they can be a support system, uh, for what you are trying to do? Because you can't do it all by yourself.
Yes, ma'am. And yes, um, we...
It could be incorporated into their daily or weekly plans, you know, so, but I'm sure that there are many of them who probably need some training themselves. So that's what I, I have records of.
I, I just wanted to add, you know, my children, growing up, I, I always took away that, that question, what do you want to be when you grow up? I never asked them that because they may not grow up. You know what I'm saying? And so we have, we are living in a day, when I was young, they asked that question, and we didn't see children dying. We didn't see the kinds of things that we have now happening. And we had an opportunity to be children. These kids today are living life every single day. And so it is more of a question of what do you like to do? What are your gifts? What are your talents? Helping them understand what they are good at, what they enjoy, and then creating their careers around that. Not what do you want, because they don't even know what, what the possibilities are of, and what, what kind of jobs you could do with what you like to do already. And so asking a different question, you're living life right at this moment. And so as you're living, what is it you like to do? And how can we expound on that to make a, a, a career for you where it is income-producing?
Got it.
Yes.
So I'm, I'm, I'm pleased that, um, you know, aligned with your push and, and your, um, comment here this evening, board members, that, um, this new, um, strategic commitment in our, uh, plan really pushes us and challenges us to, um, explore more deeply, much earlier, in a more concerted, um, and, and, uh, and in a way that kind of rallies the troops, the community around scholars as they are set up for whatever the future could hold and whatever they might want to, you know, live into in, in terms of their interest in that. And there's lots of specific, and I think increasingly as we build out the implementation plans, um, very specific strategies to help us to tap into that and support in real and, and impactful ways for our scholars, um, as they're on that journey of self-actualization. Big words.
And you can see some of those listed out in the key initiatives, um, under, um, A Strong Finish.
Thank you, Mrs. Marshall Thomas. And thank you, board, for, um, the engagement around all of that. Really exciting to see. So next we'll move on to our request to approve the renewal agreement between Jobs for America's Graduates Mississippi and the Jackson Public School District.
Um, the administration requests approval of the, of the Memorandum of Understanding between Jobs for America's Graduates Mississippi, uh, previously Jobs for Mississippi Graduates and the Jackson Public School District. Um, under the terms of this MOU, uh, JAG Mississippi will provide school-to-work training as well as incentives to stay in school for, for selected students at our six, um, high schools. Um, to provide opportunities for students to stay in school, graduate school, and be prepared for either college or the workforce, JAG Mississippi programs support the district's goals. Their primary focus is to increase academic performance and decrease the high school dropout rates. And there was some data that, um, was shared with, um, with the board that includes, um, some of the program highlights from last school year for, um, for the nine programs. And, um, the additional programs included, um, the Detention Center as well as, um, our REAP program. Did you have any questions about any of, um, the data that was shared?
Thank you, Mrs. Marshall Thomas.
You may have had some questions about, you'll notice that they talked about some of the competencies that the students actually mastered. Um, the way the, the program is designed, there are cer, there are a total of, um, I think, eight clusters. And of those eight clusters, there are particular strategies and goals that the students are expected to master. So for example, one of the clusters talks about job attainment. And so that's helping the students develop a resume, go through job searches. Another competency includes leadership, personal skills, life survival. And so under those, there are things that the students must complete in order to say that those students completed that competency with proficiency. I just wanted to share, um, share that with you.
Board members, any questions, comments? These data are helpful, Mrs. Marshall Thomas. I think, um, one of the general questions I had was just to get a sense of relative to students who don't participate in the program, um, how effective is the intervention? And it looks like, and just, the one I'm most familiar with is graduation rates. And so if, looking at the graduation rates, um, it, well, there it is. Do you want, can you speak to the graduation?
And, and of course, you know, their graduation tracking is a, is a tad bit different. Um, it is just the students that are actually enrolled in the program, their senior year, that actually complete, um, high schools. And with, most of those students complete in the program really, really keeps a tight grip on them, um, whether it's attendance, whether it's course performance. The JMG teacher, the JAG teacher now, you know, reaches out, goes out to the homes, you know, talks to the parents. And one of the, um, one of the competencies talks about removing barriers. So barriers include maybe homelessness, maybe a student with a, a child. Um, it may be housing or food insecurities. Any barriers that the scholars in the program, um, have, the program is designed to help those students overcome those barriers and graduate.
And so looking at these outcomes, if we were to run those similar numbers for students not in the program, again, just eyeballing it, it looks like these would be significantly higher. Is that, is that accurate?
That is correct. That is correct.
So it's, it's effective.
And, again, they calculate the graduation rate?
Just the ones, based on the ones that are in 12th grade, yes.
I, I heard that. Yeah, I heard that. Um, and there's others there. It's employment, it's, it's further education, it's connectivity. And, and so I know, so I guess that's my, it's, it seems that those are high numbers as well.
And the program is, um, they are part-time staff members. And so generally, they have anywhere from 30 to 45 students per, um, per teacher or instructor. So, um, it, we would love it if, you know, if lots of students could participate in the program. But the, the model, the program that we have is a part-time instructor, and they teach the two classes, um, per day.
And the employment rate, is them actually getting a job after completion?
After graduation, if that's their goal. So some students have chosen, um, post-secondary enrollment. Some students have, have chosen workforce. And so for those students that have chosen workforce, that's the percentage of students that actually come, graduated and are now, um, in full-time employment.
I just wanted to look at the, the vast difference at, at the numbers, that number.
For employment?
Yeah, across the schools.
Yep. And when they say employment, they, they consider livable wages. And so, which means that they meet, they have to meet a certain-
What kind of jobs they was getting from Winfield?
And that just depends on how many students actually chose, you know, could have been-
That track.
It could, out of the forty-five students, it may have been six that said that they were going to go directly into a job or workforce immediately after school.
And, okay.
Yeah.
Any additional questions, board members? Okay, thank you, Mrs. Marsha Thomas. You've given us a lot to think about with these data. We have one more, I believe, for Mrs. Marsha Thomas. And this is the request to approve the agreement between the American College Testing, ACT AIM, and the Jackson Public School District.
The administration presents for approval the memorandum of understanding between American College Testing and Jackson Public Schools. Under, under the terms of this MOU, JPS will participate in a two-day session where participants will grow their mastery of instructional skills for, for preparing their students for the ACT in the specific subject area they teach. In addition to a certificate of attendance, our teachers have the opportunity to become a content master. And the goal of this agreement is to provide strategic and targeted instructional support and training to JPS core teachers in English, reading, math, and science.
Thank you, Mrs. Marsha Thomas. Board members, any questions, comments? All right. Thank you for all the updates and for all the answers to our questions. Next, we will invite Dr. Michael Cormick up to the podium. He has items G through J. The first request is one to approve the amended agreement between AmeriCorps and the Jackson Public School District. Dr. Cormick?
Good evening, Dr. Sebag, Dr. Green, members of the Board and our JPS community. The administration recommends the approval of the project agreement amendment with Reading and Math Incorporated, a division of AmeriCorps. AmeriCorps is a national service program and is set to provide a wave of positive change in our local communities. The Reading and Math Corps Incorporated, with this agreement, provide JPS with service members as reading and math tutors in selected elementary and middle schools.
Thank you, Dr. Cormick. Board members, any questions or comments? Hearing none, we'll move on to the request to approve the revised job description for Guidance Counselor Elementary.
The administration is seeking to revise the job description for the Guidance Counselor Elementary position. We recommend this so that, to revise the contract for the option of one hundred eighty-seven or one hundred ninety-six days. This additional provision of days promotes equity and is important for larger elementary schools where responsibilities for scheduling and student direct counseling services are more pronounced than at smaller elementary schools. Following the implementation of our optimizing-for-equity plan, several JPS elementary schools will enroll over five hundred scholars, and an additional counselor unit has been assigned.
Thank you, Dr. Cormick. Board members, any questions, comments? Hearing none, we'll move on to the request to approve the renewal agreement between the Hines County Human Resource Agency and the Jackson Public School District for dual enrollment classes at Van Winkle Elementary.
We're quite excited about this. We are recommending that the Board of Trustees approve this agreement between the Hines County Human Resource Agency and the district to provide ten pre-kindergarten Head Start dual enrollment classrooms at Van Winkle Elementary School. Through the provision of dual-service enrollment, this provides for academic service and also ancillary supports, including medical, dental, behavioral, and mental health services to our four-year-olds who are enrolled in pre-kindergarten programs. So those students that would be Head Start eligible could both be duly enrolled, both within our JPS pre-kindergarten classrooms, and then also count for Head Start and receive those services. When Head Start does provide a field trip or other services, we work in tandem to ensure that all scholars in the building are able to attend that field trip or provide comparable support services. But we do believe that what Head Start can provide in terms of parent engagement and other workshops would be a value-add for our pre-kindergarten programming.
Thank you, Dr. Cormick. Board members, any questions, comments? I do, I do want to stop because I'm very excited about this as well. Do our students also get the benefits of the health screenings and development screenings that accompany Head Start?
They are done separately. We work in direct partnership with our Office of Climate and Wellness, and the Board has approved a number of medical and dental provision of services. There were also state mandates that require vision and other screenings. And so we work to ensure that what Head Start provides, we provide a comparable service. I think the additional piece that they're able to offer is, is both a financial win for us, but then also helps to support some of the work that they can do around parent and family engagement. They, they have a particular skill in engaging families because that's one of the requirements of the provision of services.
Great. Thank you, Dr. Cormick.
Lastly, the administration recommends the ratification of the Hosting Services Agreement with the Mississippi Department of Education and our Jackson Public Schools-Hines Early Learning Collaborative for the purpose of the Mississippi Beginnings Reimbursement Grant Application. This year, the MDE originally committed to providing the Mississippi Beginnings curriculum, and then they encouraged us to use the grant funds for the printing of those materials. This is to reimburse the district for the expense of those curricular materials.
Great. Thank you, Dr. Cormick. Board members, any questions or comments on this last item for Dr. Cormick? Thank you, Dr. Cormick.
Thank you.
Next, we'll invite Dr. Knolls to the podium. He has items K and L. The first request will be one to approve the agreement between Mississippi First and the Jackson Public School District for the Community of Practice Project Subgrant. Dr. Knolls?
All right. Good evening, Dr. Green, Board President Sebag, members of the Board. The administration is requesting approval of the agreement between Mississippi First and the Jackson Public Schools District for the Community of Practice Subgrant to develop a referral incentive program to JPS employees that help us recruit certified teachers to Jackson Public Schools. The plan is to offer monetary incentives to teachers who successfully refer qualified candidates who are hired and execute a contract with Jackson Public School District for the twenty-four, twenty-five school year. We hope that this will serve as a powerful motivator for teachers to actively participate in this referral program. We have secured a total of ninety thousand dollars as a part of the subgrant. These funds will be divided equally between Jackson Public School District and our collaborator in the Community of Practice Ambition Preparatory Charter School.
Thank you, Dr. Knolls. And it's, is, is it my, is it, is my understanding correct in that, so we'll have forty-five thousand dollars for incentives? And these, the forty-five thousand dollars is exclusively for referrals for Jackson Public Schools? None of our money will go to support referrals to charter schools?
That's correct.
Okay, thank you. Board members, any additional questions or comments? Hearing none, we'll move on to the next request to approve the agreement between the Jackson, between Jackson State University and the Jackson Public School District for student teaching internships. Dr. Knolls?
Good evening, good good. The administration is requesting approval of the renewal agreement between Jackson State University and the Jackson Public School District to continue providing student teaching internship in the Jackson Public School District during the twenty-twenty-four through the twenty-twenty-seven following spring semester. Since we started our partnership with Jackson State in twenty-twenty-one, we've placed a hundred and thirty-two student teachers within our district. From that, we've hired a total of twenty-eight student teachers as either teachers or instructional assistants. To date, of those twenty-eight, fifteen remain employed with the district currently.
Great. Thank you, Dr. Knolls. Board members, are there any questions? Comments? That's pretty good. I mean, those are good numbers. A hundred and thirty-two placements, one out of every five coming back to teach with us. Thank you for that update.
Here's one thing I would add to that. You know, I went to school and had student teachers regularly in my classrooms. Like, I think that, over and above, I, I agree, I agree with Dr. Sebag. These are great numbers. It's really encouraging to see us hiring students out of those placements. But over and above that, I just kind of applaud us plugging into these teacher programs that are putting other, you know, people who care into classrooms and want to push kids. And it really is a value-add in and of itself. The one hundred and thirty-two is a good deal. Getting, getting teachers on the back end of it is, is, is sort of icing on a cake, right?
Great.
Thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Knolls. Next, we'll invite Ms. Erin Mason to share the request to approve the agreement with the Mississippi Cyber and, yeah, with Mississippi Cyber and Jackson Public School District.
It's a mouthful. Good evening. The administration is recommending the approval of a memorandum of understanding between the Jackson Public Schools and the Mississippi Cyber Unit, which is a division of the Mississippi Office of Homeland Security for the provisioning of an attack surface management system, which is called an ASM, to monitor the JPSD infrastructure elements that are accessible to the internet. This is a free, no-cost MOU.
Thank you, Mrs. Mason. Any questions, board members, comments? All right, thank you. Next, we will invite Dr. Merritt back to the podium, this time for items N and O. Dr. Merritt? First is the request to approve the agreement between the two Mississippi Museums and the Jackson Public School District.
All right. The recommend, the administration recommends the approval of the contract between Jackson Public Schools and the two Mississippi Museums facility. As Dr. Green indicated earlier, we will be hosting a community stakeholder engagement meeting to solicit community and support, as well as stakeholder support, and how they can assist us with implement, implementation of the strategic plan.
Thank you, Dr. Merritt. Board members, any questions, comments? Hearing none, next, we'll move on to the request to approve the rental agreement between the Mississippi Department of Agriculture, Coliseum, and the Jackson Public School District for annual convocation. Board members, this is the item that I mentioned at the top of the board meeting in reference to the request to approve the agenda. Dr. Merritt?
The administration is requesting approval of the contract with the Mississippi Fair Commission for the two thousand twenty-four convocation. This annual activity is for all district teachers, administrators, and staff. This, the district will allow, this will allow district staff to hear the superintendent's message and focus on the exciting upcoming twenty-four, twenty-five school year.
So, Dr. Merritt, I know this was initially slated to be at Jackson State University. This is a, I think we will need to terminate an agreement to move this. Is that correct? Okay. So I just wanted to give board members the rationale behind this move.
Right. So the rationale, the reason that we are moving the venue for convocation is due to the cost that we are experiencing at Jackson State. Typically, in the past, convocation has been ten to fifteen thousand dollars of cost. I believe when we last looked on yesterday, we were approaching forty thousand dollars with the rental of Jackson State, fifty. Okay, and so being that this is a one-day event and we want to be good stewards of our fiscal resources, we saw a need to pivot to another site that could host it.
And, Dr. Merritt, can you clarify the, the costs?
Right. So in terms of the cost, and typically, the rental of the facility, they do comp. However, there's rental of the stage, chairs, and other equipment that are, that's required, in addition to other IT support to assist with the streaming of convocation. There was a friendly agreement that we would share this cost with Jackson State because typically, they have their convocation a week following our convocation. However, if we are sharing the cost and we are approaching forty to fifty thousand dollars, it's no way that that's a hundred thousand dollar event, so to speak. So that's the reason and rationale for the pivot.
And it's my understanding that Jackson State University is not out any money on this. Most of the money, all of the money was going to vendors that were needed for, like you've mentioned, the seating, the lighting, the stage presence, the IT, all of that.
Yes, sir.
And also, board members, I, I had a conversation with Dr. Green just around, you know, is there any reputation risk associated with moving to the Coliseum? Dr. Green, you want to speak to that?
Yeah. Thank you, Dr. Sebag. Yeah. We, we've enjoyed hosting the convocation, our convocation at JSU. I think it's been, I, I think, and I'm hearing from others, it's been a wonderful show of unity with JSU. And we're looking forward to more of that with JSU. You've heard us talk about, you know, other ways that we're partnering with them and, and looking to continue to deepen the partnership with them. In this instance, we simply believe that the, for the program that we're running, it just doesn't make fiscal sense for us to move forward with this arrangement when there are plenty of other ways for us to continue to partner with and enjoy and build on the relationship with Jackson Public Schools, I'm sorry, with Jackson State University. And again, as has been stated, the, the facility itself was, through the agreement that you all approved, that we presented to you, the facility itself was provided pro bono or, or at no cost to us. And so we wouldn't be kind of removing our rental fee of the university. It would be all of the other related costs that we simply wouldn't be bidding on or taking up. I have had an opportunity, I shared this with Dr. Sebag, I have had an opportunity to meet with President Thompson at JSU. And, and we've had another engagement since then. And so I'm confident that we will be fine moving forward with this.
Thank you, Dr. Green. Thank you, Dr. Merritt. Board members, any other questions or comments? Hearing none, we'll move on to the next item and invite Mrs. Margaret Purnell to the podium. And Mr. Burke is going to take this one. First, so he'll be up for the next two. The first is the request to approve the resolution requesting ADVALORM support for the Jackson Public School District. Mr. Burke?
Good evening, President Sebag, board members, Dr. Green, JPS family. I was going to try to do my best Margaret Purnell impression, but about item number N, I was, I was out of energy. I'm sorry. Yeah, I've been, I've been holding it over there. The administration recommends approving the annual resolution for ADVALORM in dollars for ninety-six million, nine hundred and thirty-four dollars, nine hundred and thirty-four thousand, four hundred and sixty-five dollars and fifteen cents to support the Jackson Public School District for the fiscal year twenty-twenty-four, twenty-five under Mississippi Code twenty-five, fifty-seven dash one and thirty-seven, fifty-seven, one oh four regarding tax levy for adequate education. The City Council of the City of Jackson, as taxing, tax levying authority for JPS must levy and collect all taxes to support the school district's operations. These funds are used to support all operations and debt service obligations. And this amount was presented to the Board in the annual budget presentation. So you've approved that already.
Thank you, Mr. Burke. Board members, any questions, comments? Hearing none, we will move on to the request to approve the twenty-twenty-four, twenty-twenty-five salary scale for the Jackson Public School District. Mr. Burke?
Yes, sir. We have a presentation. While he pulls that up, I would like to... There we go. The administration recommends the approval of the teacher's salary schedule, administrative staff exempt, and classified hourly, non-exempt pay scales for the twenty-twenty-four, twenty-five school year. You need to have some questions, and I hope I will answer those questions in this presentation. I first want to thank my team in operations and finance. They did a tremendous amount of work Dr. Green made reference. I also want to thank many of the people in the audience, JPS team members, who offered candid and supportive commentary as we reviewed our salary schedules and made, and come with these recommendations. Jumping right into it, we know our core values, and this one speaks particularly to equity excellence. And as we talk about our strategic plan, we'll, we'll, you know, dollars can play into joyful joy. So, so hopefully, we'll make some people happy in this presentation. There, there are several reasons that I want you to take away from why we, why we did this. And we did one of these, we've done- And we did one of these, we've done reviews of our salary schedules before, but this one speaks to four particular things. One is we wanted to be more, wanted to be more intentional in being competitive in a significant way with our, with our lower worker wages. We wanted to clarify and remove redundancies and in some of our position titles. You guys approve our annual organizational charts, and there are many times those names are in there, and they really mean the same thing, but they, but they correspond to steps on our salary schedule that actually have different values. So we wanted to align those things because the work duties were similar. And this offers us an opportunity to be more transparent in our roles and, and help us communicate those roles to the people that work for us. We want to leverage and establish JPS, and I want you to really lean into this one. We want to, JPS, our local supplement, we want our teachers to be the highest-paid teachers in the metro area. We're, we're being very intentional about that, and not even the metro area, I'm sorry, I need to correct myself, in the central region. Because this is far, far-reaching. It goes from Canton to Rankin County to Vicksburg. So we, we studied all of those school districts to make in this salary study. And then finally, we wanted to comply with the new final rule out of the Biden administration about fair, under fair labor standards and what it means to be a salary-exempt employee. So those are the four things that we'll talk about. If you're not familiar with the final rule, I'm going to give you a brief synopsis, and there's not a lot to take away from it, except for it was passed, came out in about April, and it requires districts, requires employers to really engage with their employees' jobs and analyze them in a way that determines based on a minimum salary requirement of, minimum salary requirement, who actually meets the white-collar exemption status. There, for July 1, there was a requirement to up that amount from the $35,000, roughly $35,600 that it was, to $43,000 for July 1. We're getting ahead of that, and we're going to go to the amount that's required at January 1 of 2025, which is $58,656. This means we won't have to come back to you again for a mid-year review because that is halfway through our fiscal year. We'd be looking at that in December, so we're doing it now to get ahead of that. This, another provision of the fair labor standards is that they're going to go to three-year reviews. So every three years, they're going to review the wages, this, this threshold for the prevailing wage in, across all employers. So there'll be this constant review. Key differences, just so we can align around language, and I'm, I'm trying to be very intentional about this across our district. We, we talk about employees in terms of certified and classified, but from fair labor standard standpoint, there is exempt and non-exempt. Exempt employees are those who are not eligible for overtime. They are paid on a salary basis, and they must be paid according to whatever the threshold amount is for that exemption. And those duties must meet specific requirements as set out by fair labor standards. Those people would be our administrative staff, teachers, those types of employees, executives like the cabinet and our assistant superintendents. Non-exempt employees are typically our lowest-paid workers. They're our classified workers. They are, they are eligible for overtime and must be paid overtime for every hour they work over 40 hours in, in a single work week. They can, it doesn't matter how we pay them. We can pay them by salary. We can pay them by the hour. It's important, that's an important distinction because a lot of times people get themselves in trouble by saying, well, we pay them a salary, thus they're not eligible for overtime. The, the pay basis is not the criteria by which we must measure this. There is no minimum salary except for our federal minimum wage, which is $725. And then there's, there's no criteria for them to meet for their job duties. That's established by the employer. So with that in mind, jumping right into this, the changes that we're proposing for classified, non-exempt, these are our hourly workers, our lowest-paid workers typically. We're going from, increasing from a minimum hourly rate of $10.50 an hour to $12.50 an hour. That's a $2 per hour pay increase at a minimum. It also includes between our bands, A through K, each, the prior scale call for it. Every time you went up a band, you went up a dollar per hour. We're moving that to a dollar and 50 cent per hour. So there's a, there's a cumulative shift there. Several positions, as we reviewed this, this scale, we moved several positions from other scales that will wind back up on this, wind up on the, the non-exempt hourly scale because they, they don't meet the, the criteria to be on any other scale. And they're listed here, interpreters, web manager, monitors for compliance, the chiefs, executive assistants, and administrative assistants. Interpreters, specialists, com specialists, positive behavioral specialists that are not required to be certified, and then any foreman that we have that work in our custodial area. Again, those employees who are, who are currently on that scale that are impacted by this, by these changes are our assistants. These are all of our office assistants inside of our schools, clerical and secretarial positions, our receptionist, office managers, instructional staff, custodial maintenance, food service workers, our bus drivers, our non-sworn law enforcement officers and our sworn law enforcement officers, IT and technical support, non-network level, high-tech personnel, some of our specialists, and our non-supervisory managers. On the, the classified exempt, these are the employees who have traditionally been considered administrative. They have some administrative duty and they meet this administrative exemption requirement. As I said, the minimum, the first step to establishing an exemption is that pay threshold. We are moving that pay threshold from $35,568 to the $58,656 that would have been required or will be required at January 1. We're getting in front of that. Several positions will move, are moved from this scale to the classified scale, as I said before, or to the teacher pay scale. And we'll talk a little bit about that when I get to teachers. The placement on this, it's important to remember, the placement on this scale, from left to right, moves from skill, low skill, the more low-skill positions to the higher-skill, more responsibility positions. That's how the scale is laid out in terms of the bands as they work up. Impacted staff, again, facilitators and coordinators, managers, directors, and supervisors, our legal staff, registered nurses, therapists, social workers, assistant directors, system net, and system and network administrators will all remain on this administratively exempt scale because they meet that professional white-collar exemption requirement. Some changes to the teachers. Now, again, so those are the, our classified hourly, our classified administrative. Now we're talking about our teachers. We're very excited about, to bring this to you. Again, as I said before, we're, we're very intentional about this. This will be the largest one-time increase in local supplement ever in Jackson Public School. It puts emphasis on attracting new teachers in those years zero through five, which are very pivotal to them coming into the, to our industry and staying in our industry. Investing, it, it also puts dollars in retaining our more experienced teachers, those who are six-plus. And just speaking as a population, the teachers in that group of bachelor's and master's degree holders that are zero to 20 years will see an average increase of about $2,500, and I'll talk a little bit, give you some specific examples about that in just a second. How it impacts our teachers, teachers with zero to 20 years of experience, will, we are setting a minimum supplement amount that will be added to the state minimum salary of $5,000. For teachers 21 to 30 years of experience, the minimum supplement added to the, the minimum state teacher salary will be $5250. And for those teachers of 30 years, 31 years and higher will have a minimum supplement of $5,500. And in return, in reviewing this, we did make the determination to return some non-instructional positions from the classified exempt scale at administrative scale back to the teacher's salary scale for, for determination of their pay. I will point out, there's some asterisks here, individual impact will vary based on the teacher's level, current level of certification, years of experience, and where they, the local supplement that's being applied to them right now. So here's a specific example, just to illustrate what we're talking about in that variance. So if you have a teacher who is on the current scale and they have a 1A, which is a bachelor's degree, the state minimum is $44,300. We currently add $2446 to that person's salary, which gives them a total annual salary of $46,746. Under the new scale, that same minimum is $44,300. We're adding a $500, a $5,000 local supplement, so their annual pay will go to $49,300, which will equate to an increase of $2554 for that bachelor's level, five-year teacher. Master's degree, double A, same scenario. Their increase, however, will be $2378. Subsequently, specialist, $2278. Doctorate, $1896. That's because the, the difference in their, their supplement, their current supplement minus the $5,000 is, is the amount of increase. And incrementally will go, that's how it plays out across the scale. So. How are we paying for this? I'm sure you're all asking. I'm glad you asked. So the cost for teacher group is about 3.9. The cost for the hourly, non-exempt hourly employees is about 8 million. Exempt administrative is about 1 million, and then the executive senior team is about $93,500 for a cumulative total of about 13, a little over $13 million. We have estimated that the optimization will save us about 10 and a half. And we, with the new funding we're getting under the Mississippi school funding formula, getting about 18.3 million more. That is more than adequate to cover these pay raises for this staff. And then how are we implementing it? So I want to say this, say this very clearly. All employees will see this in their August paycheck. Don't need to call HR. We're going to contact you with a notice explaining how this is going to be applied and what your amount is going to be. We, as I said before, we consulted with many of our executive team members to determine positions that needed to be moved to different scales and/or classifications. And again, HR will be, we will be working with HR to prepare the letters that will go to our teaching staff and to our hourly staff to explain what the change means, what it means to them. We will not be reissuing contracts. This will be an addendum. I'll work with Dorian, with Attorney Turner, to figure out what that language needs to look like. But that, that's the implementation plan as it is right now. And I will take any questions or allow Dr. Green to make some, he's at the edifice seat, wanting to make some, some additional comments. I know I missed something. I know I did.
No, before we take questions or, or comments, board members, just want to again, thank Mr. Burke and his team for tons of work studying our compensation, reviewing the, the new regulations, and looking through all of our budgeting, overall budgeting, and determining where there are opportunities for us to live into greater compensation for our team members. Just want to underscore that as a people business, as a people organization enterprise, our greatest asset is our people. That's why we named our strategic plan as we did, the power of people, power, the power of people and possibilities. And that's why we're bringing to you this proposal. Top line or headlines that I just want to restate or reiterate, one, we are asking for increases for all team members. And at the same time, we are privileging the greater increases or, or rate of increase for our hourly wage earners and for our teachers. You saw the differential for our hourly wage earners, the amount that we're seeking to pump into that compensation for them. You heard, I believe it was the last board meeting, and certainly times prior to that, concerns from our team members, but as well concerns from some of our, our leaders, our managers and, and team leaders who are struggling to staff, struggling to maintain staff in, in the business office here centrally and in main offices and schools. And across our custodial and bus driver and cafeteria, our child nutrition workers and campus enforcement, on and on and on. We've struggled mightily to maintain staffing in those areas. And so with the savings from optimization and with this infusion of additional funding through the state formula, our main goal was to invest in people, and so that's what we're bringing to you here. So we've prioritized the classified hourly wage earners. We've, we want to position ourselves to be the highest-paid in this area and to be able to say that boldly with our local supplement. Obviously, we needed to comply with the law, and so that pushed us to a little farther in, in some areas on the scales, but I'm excited to be able to do it and, and excited for what that will mean for us as we go out and recruit for those positions and talk to our team members about what excellence looks like and what the goals for outcomes for our scholars and customer service and responsiveness and our continued learning and all those things, what that looks like for us. And as you see here, of, of the dollars that, additional dollars that we expect from the state and anticipate in savings that we're investing by this proposal, over $13 million in our people. And for me, I see that, and I believe our team sees that, as the cost of doing business. That's, this is what it's going to cost for us to get the people, keep the people, to do the things that we're asking folks to do to serve our children and families. So I just wanted to underscore what Mr. Burke has shared and open it up to, you know, any questions that you have for us or any reactions that you have to this.
Thank you, Dr. Green. Board members?
Thank you for presenting such a detailed report.
You're welcome.
Are you looking for people to come out of retirement? I'm impressed, yes.
We're playing to win.
That's right.
Come out of retirement. My, my next question, I guess this is a real question. About national boards certified, this is, that doesn't include any of that. That would be the add-on.
That's, that's another add-on.
What is the still $6,000?
Yes.
That the state gives?
Yes, ma'am.
Gives you a little something to think about.
It does.
Yes. But, and I am very pleased to see that, you know, we are looking at increasing the salaries of JPS workers who work so diligently. And we are just really proud of all of you for all of the hard work that you do on a daily basis and everything. I know that it will help us in our recruiting, Dr. Knowles. The, the other thing that I wanted to ask you about, what was the other thing I wanted to ask you about? Well, I've forgotten the other thing. I didn't write it down there. But this is excellent, and I just look forward, and I'm sure that the employees are looking forward, will be looking forward to this, you know, because everything's going up, and we are proud to say that our salaries are going up. Oh, I know. What district is the highest paid in the, in the state?
You mean now or prior to your approval? Right, right. After you approve this, we will be the highest paid. But right now, we are, we weren't the lowest paid, but Rankin County and Madison were. Yeah, they were the, the highest.
Let, let's make, let's double-check. I don't, I don't. Let, let's make, let's double check. I don't, I don't know, the question was in the state.
Oh, in the state?
Mm-hmm, in the state, yeah.
I didn't, I didn't, I didn't look at the state, but I could almost...
I know that one time it was like the Tupelo, the Tupelo area.
Tupelo and Belox, yeah, the coast areas were the highest, but I don't know, but I can give you an answer to that. Because I'd like to, I mean, that'd be the next thing. Where, where do we go from here?
Thank you so much.
You're welcome. And I would, I would be remiss, there, there's a lot of value in, in, to what we're trying to do. In terms of, and the team will, will attest to this, when you're having to constantly hire and retrain because you're constantly losing people because you can't, that's, that's money out the door. That hopefully with this, we can retain these folks, we can have that cumulative build of keeping the knowledge, the training inside our school district, instead of training them and sending them off somewhere else. So, there's a lot of, there's, there's additional savings that's not even captured here.
One more question. Okay, we approved this tonight, then this will be what you will be offering to the persons who are going to flock to the job, job fair.
Yes.
They're going to flock to the job fair because they're going to hear about this on the news, so... Yeah, so this is what you...
Yes, ma'am. We're, we're, yep, we're prepared.
Okay.
Awesome. That was my question. I was wondering, she said the news, but I was wondering, that commercial that we did see in the report earlier, is that on, like, the, the news? Somewhere, like, beyond just our channels? It is. Okay, great. Awesome.
I guess.
And, and we're prepared.
Well, no, not the, not the salaries, I'm just saying the job fair.
And, and related to that, we're prepared to share an advisement to the media, should we need to, depending on how, how you react to this proposal.
I, I did have a couple of, well, a question, and then one thing I just wanted to highlight, that I think's important to highlight. The, the first question is, for people who are, where the classification's changed, right? Have we confirmed that nobody's taking pay cuts? Right? That's, I, I really didn't want to say that again. Nobody's taking pay cuts. Like, so it's not as if anybody in this shift is losing money. So, that's a great point, and I, and I do want to applaud, I know how much work that can take when you're dealing with, you know, federal pay scales and classifications, and trying to make sure everybody's where they're, in the right bucket, and then trying to make sure that everybody's getting, you know, that nobody's getting harmed by the reclassification or anything like that. So, I applaud the work that goes into that, whether that's from your team, legal team, whoever contributed. Second thing, this is not a question, and I just want to highlight it. Earlier this year, during the legislative session, there was a bipartisan proposal. I think it came from the House initially, but it was, at some point, it hit the Senate, it hit the Senate committee, and it was for a Mississippi minimum wage, right? And the Mississippi minimum wage proposal that the Senate put forward would have moved the minimum wage in Mississippi from the federal seven twenty, seven twenty-five to ten fifty by twenty-twenty-six. So, to put that differently, it would have put, by twenty-twenty-six, it would have put a minimum wage in place that would have matched our old minimum, right? And this is pushing us past that, we're blowing past the goal that, that was set by the legislature for years down the road, and oh, by the way, it didn't pass. And so, you know, this, what we're talking about is over five dollars an hour beyond the minimum wages enforced in this state. And I just think that's both laudable and necessary, given all the challenges that we heard, we've heard it from our, our team members. We, you don't have to look very far to hear people talking about how, how much inflation, none of the things like that have hurt. I, I, I just think the numbers that you showed, particularly the investment that we're making, look, the investment in the teachers is phenomenal, and, and I'm guessing Dr. Knowles is not going to be upset in using that as a recruitment tool. But, I, I would go further and say that the investment that we're making in our classified non-exempt or hourly employees is just immense, and it's so, it, it can make such a huge difference for, for our team members and absolutely contribute to JPS joy. So, thank, thank you for the proposal, and I, and I really do appreciate the thoughtfulness. You know, down to the idea that we, we have this additional money allocated by the state, we have this savings in the bank, we're not going and spending it dollar for dollar because that may not be sustainable, right? And so, I, I appreciate that this reflects thoughtfulness and sustainability in, in addition to the, the, the growth that our, that our teachers and our hourly workers and our administrative workers and all those people are seeing. So, thank you all.
Mr. Burke, I have one question.
Yes, sir.
If the school board doesn't approve the optimization plan that was put before us earlier, could we do what is before us today?
If, if the board, yes. With the new revenue, with, with this additional revenue from the state, yes. We, we could still do it. We might, we might, no. I still would have been as intentional as we are. I mean, this, this is necessary. So, we would have had to find a way to do it. But with, looking up here, there's, if you look at that bottom line, even if I take out the optimization estimate of ten point five, the new funding formula provides us eighteen million dollars more than what we've received in the past. And we're only proposing to spend thirteen million, and so that still leaves a five million dollars or so gap.
Friendly amendment, amendment to that, though. But there are some other things in the budget that we have been able to do as a result of the increased allocation from the state, so we couldn't do those things, and...
And, yes, that's...
Yeah, and Dr. Emma put this to you, because effectively, he missed the softball. I mean, the, the point I was trying, this board struggled hard with that decision.
Right.
And where I was going is, I, at least my understanding of it is, had we not moved on that, we wouldn't have been able to do this. There's, and, and that, you know, yes, if you look at the, the numbers here, there's, but there's all kinds of other things in the budget. And so, I really, I need you to speak to this.
Yes.
Because why did we do it? If it's not, because I was ready to give a big speech about the board owning part of this. So, I need you to help us as a board feel that we own part of this.
Yeah, so, and I won't have to work hard at it, because you absolutely do. So, we know that there's, and we, we talked a lot about the continued needs in our buildings and continued investments that need to be made there. We've talked a lot about, and we have already today, but you've heard over the years, we continue to struggle with our records. And part of that, a big part of that, is the turnover that we have with our records clerks and others in our schools that help us to maintain those records. There's continued increased costs that we're experiencing with utilities and, and on and on, all of those sorts of things that we're having to, to contend with. And so, could we have paid for this if that were the only change in our costs with the, without the optimization? Perhaps. But the reality is, many other things have changed. And so, there's no way that we could have dealt with all of those other changes and with the continued needs in our buildings, et cetera, et cetera, and made this kind of an, an investment in our people. And frankly, you know, it would have been hard for us to go through all of that optimization work and not come back around and, and demonstrate to our people that, oh, this wasn't for Eric Green to have a slush fund, this was to ensure that we've got the people to do the work to serve our children and families. And so, no, we could not have done all of this, all of that, without that optimization effort. And because we were so intent on things being better for all of us, we're excited to show folks in this really big impactful way with money, show us the money, with money that optimization was necessary, and this is one of the ways that we continue to position ourselves to win. So, no, we could have not, we could not have done all that we needed to do inclusive of this salary, these salary increases for our people. As I talk about it, my voice gets a little shaky, because I'm just like, I'm, I'm excited that we can do this now, and, and that we're able to, that we're not having to, you know, turn the lights off at, at four o'clock because we're afraid we won't be able to do this and pay our bills, and on and on and on. But, but that we'll be able to do this comfortably, because we positioned ourselves to do this comfortably, and, and hopefully to continue to make increases. Because I would like to be, to be able to say at some point statewide, no, we have the largest local supplement by none. I'd love to be able to say that, and I want to continue to work towards that, so...
Thank you, Dr. Green, and, and Mr. Burke, I apologize about the softball analogy, that was inappropriate.
No, no, you're fine. I, my brain was focused on something.
It's all right, it's numbers. So, but I do, and I really want to do that for the benefit of this board, just because, you know, when we were in the middle of it, it's very hard to see past it and, and to look forward. And this year's budget, in the seven years I've been on the board, was the most forward-thinking budget I feel like we've been able to be a part of. And it reflects a lot of hard work by you and your team, but it also reflects the, the willingness to go there by, by the board. And we all remember, that was not an easy night, it was not an easy time leading up to that decision. And, and I'm hopeful, again, that, that this, this helps us see the why, to be a part of the why behind it. And so, again, I appreciate all the effort that went into it and look forward to more forward-thinking, thinking budgets, because that's effectively, those decisions that were made were part of being able to position us to get into a mindset of investment into our people and our systems versus the, this, moving away from the scarcity mentality that I feel like is pretty, so, and so dominant in the years before this one. Not saying we don't have more needs, but it just, it, it, it feels like we're much further along.
Sir.
Dr. Sivak.
Yes, Dr. Hairston.
May I just affirm everything you said and thank Dr. Burke for his work, because you remember what it was like when we were under that state mandate and how we had to work with the budget. And so, it is such a joy to have such a competence and, and good work going on right now. But I just want to affirm it. Thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Hairston.
Thank you.
Ms. Hill remembers very well too. Excuse me, Ms. Hill, I'm trying to think of your name.
All right.
Okay.
Any other questions or comments, board members?
A quick search of the internet apparently reveals that Pascagoula is the highest paying school district in the state of Mississippi. I didn't want to say their name, but I was told by my boss over here.
All right. We'll, we'll take second highest for now. All right. Board members, that concludes our information, action, item, agenda. Is there a motion to approve items A through Q? Ms. Thompson has moved, Mr. Figurs has seconded. All in favor?
Aye.
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 The motion carries. Thank you, everyone, for all of the work that went into it. We're expecting a much shorter agenda in the next board meeting. All right. Next, we have our consent agenda items for finance. All the consent agenda items for finance have been reviewed by the board previously, and we had an opportunity to ask the administration questions. Are there any further questions? Hearing none, is there a motion to approve the consent agenda finance?
So move.
Ms. Hill has moved, Ms. Figurs has seconded. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
The motion carries. Next, we have the consent agenda items general. The board has previously reviewed all the consent agenda items, and we've had an opportunity to ask the administration questions. Are there any further questions? Hearing none, is there a motion to approve?
Motion.
Second.
Ms. McGuffey has moved, Ms. Hill has seconded. All in favor?
Aye.
The motion carries. Next, we have the consent agenda items personnel. All the consent agenda items personnel have been reviewed by the board previously, and we've had an opportunity to ask the administration questions. Are there any further questions? Hearing none, is there a motion to approve the consent agenda personnel?
So move.
Second.
Ms. Hill has moved, Ms. McGuffey has seconded. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
The motion carries. Board members, we do have a consideration to hold an executive session. Is there a motion to close the meeting to consider the need to go into executive session?
So move.
Second.
Ms. Figurs has moved, Ms. McGuffey has seconded. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
The motion carries. Thank you, everyone, and have a good evening.